And the blue cabbage. You know, a lot of those new boxes.
Oh, yes. Let's take control.
What's with three minutes?
Please.
Oh, yeah, the green has a red.
And then, did I tell you the machinery's rule there? One.
It's simple.
He passed what's up, one time ago. But he kept Mary's ashes.
Yes.
And his daughter just passed away.
Oh, no.
So all of a sudden, it was like the one team. So you, uh, other people walking.
All right.
Coming down, just sort of like. And they asked me, was this sponsored by the. And then one woman, it's funny, but Cecil and Mary, his daughter, she kept her ashes. And so it was a certain.
And then Cecil and Mary.
All right.
So they had one son.
Yeah, this is the former.
Being for.
Well, she, you know, told them, sort of. They were. And she didn't realize that. The difference between Cecil's home and sort of a lot of times. Between parent and center. So to say the standard, she realized the difference. So actually, she. That's what caused it. A lot of this is.
So was he still?
I don't know.
That's all.
So.
So we see a control of one, two controls. Maybe.
Well, he was a little extra, so.
Thanks.
All right. Down south. Just a lot of it, so. And then. It's a my son who knows where the money or our house. Empty house. She said, I'm going to work out there as well. Actually, a lot of them, except. Cecil. And he made it all the way across.
All of these. Little family about money.
I don't know. And some team, teach other kind of big stuff besides.
Mm-hmm.
So. Apple, anybody else on the turn. Uh, it's just like me, okay. Crazy how he. He really has a method of houses worked out. Oh, and a beautiful, beautiful apartment there in the corner.
All right, seven. We will call me in due order. First item on the agenda is. It's in your bill. So we received the documentation from the legal counsel. Hopefully, this is everything that we need to go through. And execute on the sale transactions. There's stuff here that we need to go. Oh, holding a jacket for a really good website, great. Um, some of this needs to be notarized. And you have your notary's place, right? It is a nineteen.
Yes.
So, um.
We're going to add something to. To the police department using the.
We're going to do a letter agreement. Um, draft consent that Derek, I know Derek's been all along. Just want to ask him, look at it, but we'll, we'll get back here in the other side of. It, it's going to be, okay, that's. Let me just email them. Um, we'll get it all. Um, done. Now, Derek indicated that. The seller, which is us, um, who are title company and the title services. The town will be writing a check for twenty-two, two thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars to cover them. Um, the buyer has a responsibility for four hundred and ninety-nine dollars. So I'm just letting you know. Just to handle all the. Of the legal, um. I think it's a title insurance applied to it.
Will you guys be talking about the rating piece? I'm just. Are we willing to talk about it?
So. Um, he has a pen.
It's not.
So, um.
All three of some of those.
Um, some of you are just Ray as chairman, some of you, all of you.
Which we need.
Yep. So, okay, so this is going to be for. You hear she goes there.
All three?
Yep. Yep, all three. It's like, it's like a real shit. Oh, cross her name out. Um, and.
Oh, you better jump.
So I've, um, here, Kathy wants to sign. And do this, let's cross Wendy's name out. Put, print George's name. And then you and Kathy just initial over here. Just as acknowledgement that he's the.
Just print it.
Sign, signature, yeah. Okay, yeah. We'll get him over to her and notarize. Oh, don't go away.
Don't worry.
And. And we'll get you guys. The copies of all of these as well, okay? So. I, Derek just sent them yesterday. Um, so, uh, that's where they. Do the same thing they did Wendy. I didn't know it was going to be reading through. Yeah. There. Oh, yeah, you're okay, because they, they printed your name here. So you just need to sign the box of Catherine and sign here. And leave something. You did yours? Yeah, you're number two. Yeah, I wrote your name. Do you have something here? You. The picture of. And your two. That is. Yeah, you signed right in that box, exactly, George, perfect.
Right in my name.
But is there a pay rate? Perfect? Yeah.
There's another empty mic there.
Um, yes, this is for, that's for the, the legal office has the red arrows. So they're gonna, they're gonna sign off on all those. Um, this one actually need two signatures for some reason. Um, so this has Ray and Catherine in that box, Catherine in that box. Anybody want to be a witness? So like. Yeah, exactly. Let's see. Actually, you probably. Yeah. So how do you do that? Yeah, exactly, part to the first part or part to the second? Uh, signatures here, the witness on that one. That's for the legal. And then. Last one, same name. You sign on any lines. Correct for George.
Are we named?
He's very perfect.
Who's down?
Warren Tepper.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Warren, Warren, River Road.
So that's it, roll on, we'll, what we'll do is, um, we will.
Scan it?
Uh, yeah, the, the, the legal. Um, getting information about the checks. Um, in terms of who would need to make the email. Um. For the settlement services. We'll get you that information. You guys manage the check over here. We'll finish up the documents. Send it to the lawyers. We'll give copies of those and back to you guys.
Four ninety.
Yeah, four ninety, we're like two ninety. Uh, I will get you the information, we'll get the information to you. That way, you'll, you'll have it and you can take your time through it and then. Get us the check and then we'll send it all off. All right? And then, as soon as I hear back from Derek of, you know, any changes to the. Access of the meeting, just allowing the fire, emergency management, uh, road and police. Uh, just have access to the bottom area. Soon as he comes back, we'll get copies of that, the sun off, I'll get that back.
Sure.
All right. Do you guys have a building as soon as that's filed with the party?
I wanted to ask you guys about the rating piece, that was my.
Next up. I may need. Uh, so, okay, so we're all set? You guys don't have anything else on the transaction? Okay, go right ahead, Jeff.
Um. I was really surprised by this in my water bill. Was this rate communicated to the village district before the letter in the bill? Like the rating piece?
Uh, I think it was in a minute or so. It was about minutes.
But you didn't send.
The district meeting.
Anymore. But you didn't send anything to the residents, it was just the meeting?
No, that's, that's what we sent.
Right, but I, I mean, I got this in my bill, so I didn't know there was a rating piece until I opened my bill. So. There wasn't, I want to make sure that I didn't miss anything, so there was no notification. Um, can you, can you kind of break down for me the way of like. How you came to the increase and kind of what the process was?
Well, it's, it's happened. Day six months, looking at this, twenty-four. Doesn't need it. And we're still not really, really sure. It's going to be another increase next year or something. I said, well, I can learn to say whatever. Because I'm sure, obviously, we don't. With the, with this, we. This one, that, the post, that, that, sort of, you know, it's already out. I don't know how long it's going to be. Plus, there is a start. And of course. How close it increases to my. We have, we have a new regulation now for EPA. Temporarily, but we have, we have to transform, sample, call it, every day.
To conquer?
Call us every day. All right.
This is new?
This is new, the new. The final, the final, the final, the final, the final agreement, some reason, they're up, two feet up. They're going to, they're going to change it. It takes months and months, and we even have to change back the protocols. And in the meantime, we have this, we have to transform, uh, sample, call it, every day, every one, which is normally four, five days a week. And we, we, we delivered an agreement with four towns. So the one person. Who need, who need, uh, takes them up.
So not every town is having to run somebody up there in there?
Just want to be able to take, it takes something, you know. That's a. Who takes them up and now we put them share the cost of it.
What, what other towns are doing it?
Uh, zero. Wow, but the, as a rookie, it's incredibly complicated. We three don't just sit there, we have oil container. And all these firms that charge us fees, discuss everything with us. We have engineers who show up and discuss everything with us. We have lawyers, when he's talking about twenty-five hundred dollars just to correct, which is nonsense, but that's, you know. I'm sure you're finding the same thing, it's like, it's, it came with one of our district meetings, which hardly anybody attends. But you would see how really complex all this. And so one meeting a month. Is, I'm sure you just started this third year. That, that. We had so much of hers. And then when we have, we meet, uh, fortunately with Zoom, we meet with these people, we meet today. And they tell us things, well, we don't really qualify, we're looking for this, we're looking for that. If you get a pump that quits parts, I don't even, I don't even know, we haven't got the part yet. And then we get people coming. Electricians and these people charge huge money from finally leaving their house, sort of place of business. Okay, and then they come down and there, there's no competition. It's really hard to find somebody who. Two of our employees are retiring. So that is a huge problem, I'm sure they don't want all of them no money in the last year. We need all this work. And there's no way, there's no way they're coming for sewer chairs. There's a sewer company, there's a thousand jobs next five years, just in that kind of. Uh, rather called low tech type job that you could get. But that's the thing, we get more complex, our computer systems, how we upgrade our computer systems to security. We upgrade our meters, we upgrade the. Constant things coming through oil container. Pardon?
Our fences.
Here's our pencil. And one of the problems that we've had is we haven't really, we've been neglectful on maintenance all these years. So as you see with that rating piece, we haven't raised the rates in ten years. And all of it, it was just getting beyond belief, so we're trying to catch up a little bit. But the thing is, we're limited in the number of, uh, customers we have. The cost is awful, we can't expand our customer base. Now, we're trying to connect with new market, okay, one point seventy-dollar project. But that's just the beginning, maybe ten thousand just to talk to each other. They're too old, right?
What's, what is, what is the status of, I mean, do you guys think that you're going to end up part of the new market system over time?
Maybe, well, we've got a grant for seventy.
Yeah.
Seventy hundred. Believe me.
When, when, when is that feasibility study supposed to be done?
It's always government science.
Yeah.
Okay, there's another thing.
It's always.
There's money sitting aside, but politically up above, I'm sure you get the same. Nobody wants to release it, it's complicated to get one released. So we're constantly arguing with that thing. And then, one thing that happened, we had one bookkeeping system, but somehow oil container and state are deciding to separate another. Bookkeeping system yet. And Burton was right, he said, keep them separate. We should have, but we didn't, and now we have to go back. So Wendy has a lot of work to separate them and leave the bookkeeping. So it's, uh.
In my mind, should we have waited ten years? It's all I said, I don't know. All she had. We should have done it five years.
And here's another thing that brings one up. Because every time a house is transferred, we get work to do, we gotta read the meters, we gotta go to the lawyers, the lawyers have to sign off. But they all want. Yeah.
Have you been able to access, like, what kind of grant programs are you guys working with to. Like particularly for the wastewater treatment plant? Have you guys been working toward any grants on that stuff?
Yes.
Awesome.
Everything's available.
Do you guys want?
Eventually, we're looking at a huge field for that. Pretty practicing renovation.
Sludge removal.
Sludge removal, we're looking at a huge field for that.
When do you anticipate that's going to happen?
It's, it's on hold. I don't know. But it hasn't been done in forty years. Everybody cleaned out for forty, forty seven years. But that's, you can imagine, the big problem is with sludge, where it goes.
What do you do with it?
What do you anticipate the cost is going to be?
Are you a sludge plant? Cause B fat. B fat, B, B first.
Hey, you know, we, we, we investigated care.
I mean, nobody wants to take your. Yeah, it's, isn't it because of the B fat potential and.
The market.
If more of it is going to air, it's probably shouldn't be. What's that? What other entities doing with their storage, I mean, they're coming in and shipping.
So are you thinking if we can hook up to new market, then that would avoid that cost?
Some.
Some of it.
Well, also, it also, uh, I mean, to the point that they're talking about, I think, I don't. But by connecting with new market, you end up being able to spread that cost over a much larger base in a base that can grow still.
But here's the problem. While we're waiting, new market is expanding, and the more people we put on it, the less water we have to sell us. But there's a limited model.
Construction to it, that'd be one point eight million.
Just.
Did it interconnect?
By. How do you anticipate getting that, do you know?
Stay the long road.
So will that transfer back on to customers as like a bond or something like that?
Same as you're saying now, someone will explain now. Who worked out. You know, the system. We also. Have a generator, a main generator, that's. Controls, uh, once you have a whole water system. That can. March, that's the door.
Yeah.
And what is. So what do you have? And there is no water pipe available. We have to, we don't pay the. It's fifteen hundred dollars a month.
Who's paying that?
So water pipe is sitting on coast of California, if you wanted to start a project, you can have a shortage of water pipe. I tell you.
It's one dollar.
We pull our hair out. I'm sure you're doing the same thing.
You do sure.
Probably more about. Or should put you on this, on this daily run up to conquer. And do you think that's going to transpire back to until the EPA signs off on not having. And, and you saw it, any congressional report or you say congressional review? We try. You've talked to congressional officers or senatorial officers. And they just get your offer, they're looking at it, or what was there? Give you names, you can be. And you've talked to them. Also, it's. It's almost, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, it's almost to the point, you know, we need you to make the content for us. The arson, which, uh, thank you for reading the letter. Uh, the arson problem, we managed to solve temporarily, hopefully, dependent by Wendy and three well signed already. It was stepped, stepped right to this, the engineers wanted to move to filtration system. So what if we can't keep it balanced? Because of the level of water and, you know, how much water is drowned. We might eventually have to move, probably. In, in a decade, move to a, a filtration system for arson.
Which that filtration system was the two hundred nine hundred.
We just have stage, right? Almost.
We're swallowing.
We were only able to adjust at once. Run different times and broaden that down three year long.
Yeah, you guys have been doing a great job, I think, in this. Slough, you know, like.
If, if, if we didn't do this, or people don't want to do this anymore. More days, or you have to hire a full-time person, just like.
Oh, I know.
And for a small panel in New Fields, unlike New Market, that's why you're going to New Market, you get all of those type of services, you get.
Many steps.
Well, again, it's, it's, it's a, there's an economic scale. Um, not, not only in things like having a larger user base. But, um, having a, um, larger entity that's easier to. Feel in the labor and, and the services that are necessary.
By handles and we're all.
Yeah.
It just feels like a train heading straight for a wall. Like, all of these things that sound like they're going to be coming up soon, like. I don't.
I don't, I wouldn't.
Well.
We're in the district.
Yeah.
Here's, he raised our entire. You don't, you don't realize how much work he does behind the scenes, if he's not taking. Out there reading the meter, when he transfers properties and this and that, all the time, taking care of it. When people come to check on things, yeah, I've got the person from the commission there that's supervised. And you can see the stuff people flush down the toilets.
We evolved for some weekend too, we don't think so. So.
Um, we're. So it's trying to go a little thicker, starting to kind of. We're all, I've been working on a little education program at school. We're trying to meet with the kids and tell them, there's only two things that are on the toilet, period.
No Legos, no high scotters.
No Legos. You. Someone had a, you were working with a.
Is that what that is?
That's what that is.
Oh, my gosh.
And I saw it, it bowled my pump up, dumbfounded. It hasn't made sense. Do you forecast about the same increase? Not.
No.
For all of this.
No, no. Yeah, I was.
That's all.
I was thinking one, I was saying, I'm looking at.
Oh, okay, so this is kind of.
Oh, yeah, this.
This is a shot.
This is charities.
Do you have a.
Should have done it, should have wanted to.
So going forward, you'll just do increments of all extreme.
But the, you come up with that percentage, I can't tell you how much work it is, so you have some. Did you know that, what is it, a cubic, a cubic bucket, or bucket? I don't know, never seen.
That's magic.
The way, I've never been seeing the way they measure, the way that different people sell water in different companies. We have experts come in on different formulas, through, crunch different numbers, all kinds of ways. And that's. And so we came up with. And I'm actually, personally, I didn't think my bills that absorb a bit all. But if you're on a pay income, it's, which I am, but just. It's a sin, I, there's no cheaper way, I can possibly think of it, talk to all kinds of experts, we have our engineers, tell us.
No, I appreciate.
Oh, I know, it's not, you know, I get everybody asks this question. What I'm trying to do. What I'm trying to do is, I guess, the public needs to be educated in our district meetings. I understand everything, there's enough time to go, but it's really complicated. Oh, I had people come down to the river and ask if that's where the water comes from.
We didn't have to tell them, did we?
I said, "Wait, excuse me, you guys don't have water?"
Getting into deceleration.
So, and rightly so, because people aren't educated. Where the water system, the water table, and we live in an arsenic-prone area. So the more turbidity you set up of the water, the more dissolved, the more arsenic gets in the water. People, there's no control over the buildings. So they come in and build byhouses out Old Lee Road, right? Put their pipe down.
Into the act.
Into the act. There's so much water in this. And there's a big expensive houses, million-dollar houses. So we've got like jacuzzi's and swimming pools and...
Conservation is key. They train their shot up. Pause it on a little button while we're brushing the teeth. Now that's... It all starts.
Nobody, a hundred people did that.
Yes.
Even through the process.
And you all want to see, you know, watering your lawns. We don't want to... Richie Carroll's had a six and five day old neighbor out of my yard.
And... And then he will sign them all. They buy these houses, they sign these agreements when they buy, that people wants covenant center. That's huge money. And when they put on them, the next problem they have, the town is facing this, like, you can come all the fertilizers, they all come home, maybe the litter, that's another expense that's something a lot, it's something more of a testing of that. So...
If you sit there any longer, how much more are we going to...
How many years? How many years? For... They've asked, "How just simple, reduce it." How many magic people? This is maybe...
Oh, you're...
Yeah, you were telling me about that before.
Wow, seventy percent, yeah?
Yeah, they changed their chemicals.
You, wow.
In the process.
That's crazy.
So there's education too. I think maybe the people who live in the lawns, they could find alternative fertilizers that they could use on the left side. But then, that's once again, it's education, it's science, expertise, it's knowledge.
Maybe, sorry.
So I'm looking for water permission. And then we use them after.
Time to take.
Two more years?
Year and a half.
All right.
Oh, not, you're not retiring right now? That wasn't your announcement?
When do you guys, when do you guys have a lunch or a Christmas? And your annual meeting to do?
We are losing that. I mean, Sore. Sore, they're both retired.
That, those guy operates down at the treatment building?
Yeah, they're both in there. These process, there's this, they're like, who responds, which retired, three times.
Have you found a replacement?
No.
They're trying to do it. Like I said, if you know any young people who want to go into good paying jobs. Water, if you go to trade school, I'm kind of a normal station, bring back the trades. And you could very easily, an SSD set out the water sewer crew. You could use the town as internships and all these sort of things. Very good job. And people say sewer is not, you know. But...
Have you reached out to the SAU about that?
Pardon?
Have you reached out to the SAU about that?
SSD director, I'm making... Thank you, Susan. Some people don't really pay attention to what they get. I guess, couldn't get their bill. But you know, anybody that's man or woman that wants to go into that, great field. But once again, it's the mathematics. You have to have algebra one, which becomes a problem for a lot of kids. No, seriously, SSD now is very special. They will not take kids that haven't had algebra one in high school. They need to do the trade program. They said they can't do the trades or all that, that kind of math problem. So it'll be...
All right, well, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
If you're on your board, ask more about water.
No, it's fascinating. Thank you.
All right, have a good evening. Bye, next up. Full license. So we've got some correspondence. And I reached out to Derek about this. This is dealing with, Jack, I don't know if you remember, we're dealing with the RSA seventy-two, twenty-three. You know, the state changed the rules about full licenses and information collected from the cable companies and the electric companies and then allowing to distribute it. We got some correspondence back, raising some questions about it. I haven't done enough homework on this. I'm probably just defer this before we take action on it. I don't know if there's any questions across that you guys had about the poll tax thing. It's a full state legal issue.
So what are the, what's the issue that we haven't?
It is, there's certain information that we need to, correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, it's information that we need to provide back to the utilities and the...
Well, that's what the lobby's saying, or that the... The fire is saying.
Yeah.
But I know on that sheet, all I was required to do was just have them guys sign it. It's just something we need to do that, um, whole. And about that, that is...
I suggest that...
Do they tax them? Isn't that to tax them?
Yeah, it's basically deal with the poll tax. And I asked Derek to look at it, but it was short notice, because we just got this yesterday.
Uh, they launched it.
Yeah, they just launched back yesterday. I suggest we defer it and probably get a better read from... Just so that we can get up to speed on it. Like I said, I don't know it, I don't know enough here to know exactly what our responsibility is and what we need to do, so...
Yeah, because this is from the minutes that I've heard from twenty twenty eight.
Right, from last year, the last...
Two years ago.
Two years ago, yes.
So was there no issue with the poll taxes for twenty-one?
I assume there wasn't, because I assume we collected it last year. But again, I don't know. I don't know, I haven't had a chance to, you know, and Suzie Wang, I was going to ask her what we did about poll taxes, so I figure we'll just defer. Soon we'll be back next week and we'll get a chance to talk to her later.
And I just thought, you know, I just found out a little about a person from the... That company, and it's almost like it's in the news. I'm guessing that there's a new media position, I just realized that we can do this. And then I'll send a question. But I never sent them anything, I didn't have that. I just said, "Here, you sign it, and then we'll..."
Yep. So let's do some more homework, maybe I said at the next meeting. With attachments, so... Here we are. Should have a packet. This is more informative than anything that we need to do. So they attached the Hazel property with our claim for two hundred twelve thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars. And this looks like it has gone through the court and through the sheriff's department to attach. So that information is there. I just got this to myself, but I don't think there's anything for us to take action on. I think it is more of information back to us on the board that this has been acted on by the corporate authorities.
So now what? Do we sell it?
It is basically going through sheriff's auction. And the sheriff's department basically holds the auction. And then based on proceeds from that auction, we are... I have no idea, no idea. Sue would probably have a better idea about that, although I don't even know if there's ever been a sheriff's auction that she's handled. But my guess is probably, you know, a couple of months to basically do whatever they need to do, put up our auction. And I don't know if they have regulars property auctions or not, and just goes with the process. I'll certainly ask around and I'll let you guys know what I find out. Water and sewer newsletter we just did. You guys have anything else on that? Timber tax. We have here a... Lot two oh eight fourteen. Timber tax, this is for the development up on Old Lee, protected. World Holdings is the property owner. They are taking down timber to do that development up on Old Lee. And they are... We need to sign off on the timber tax. It's a total of, it's like sixteen hundred ninety-two dollars and twenty-six cents. Any questions? See, most of us going toward five master chips and four feet of water. I'll make a motion to sign the intent to cut for lot number two oh eight fourteen.
Second.
Second by Jackie, all in favor?
All right.
Two pages to sign. Next item, current use change tax. Lot two oh seven, two dash one, which is Chuck and Lucy Oliver up off of Old Lee Road. They're looking to make a change on the current use. Eight bridge. It looks like a small number, small numbers are being changed. They currently have forty-five point two nine in current use. And with the changes, they would have forty-four point one three remaining in current use. Any questions?
Totally a five thousand dollar bill.
I guess that's the latest change tax, given the market value of the time of change. I assume that that's, you know, that's what it is, given the numbers are right.
Ouch.
Yeah, I know.
So is there any, what do you please?
I don't even know. It looks like... I don't know. You know, I know that they finished their home up on the property. And I don't know if this is just a...
What's in there? The barn and driveway? So maybe carry your barn and driveway?
Oh, yeah, they may be moving that area out of current use. Because the barn and driveway are basically done now. They recently finished that one. So they're now locked up. And my guess is we got, you know, the certificate of occupancy, they need to change it. All right. I'll make a motion to accept the current use change tax for lot two oh seven two dash one. Second by you? All in favor? All right. These two places, they also want you to print your name on the first. All right. This is nothing we need to deal with right away. This came in to the office, you know, it's a service that somebody's pushing, obviously probably the most people's values. Take a look at it, you know, I'm not sure if this is something that we want to do or not, but we can talk about it at the next meeting. Just something we will take with you tonight.
Do we have any information on my cost?
Do not, do not. Just came in, just came in, Ebert's old email. And Keisha thought we might be interested in it, so we'll take a look at it.
Also, the person actually called about that?
Yeah.
She went on to come in and show us her spot on location.
Just to talk about?
To talk about the house and stuff, so it's something that we will just...
Okay. Take a look at it if we want to come in for lunch. Again, I haven't done any homework about this. A few other things, just more informative. I'm going to try to ask Brian, the road agent, Brian Kinnipstein, to come in at the next meeting. I got a few inquiries from people out of Paul's Mill about what are we doing with the intersection they got put off last year because they've got to pave all of eighty-seven. And they were just requiring about it. So I'm going to just have Brian come in at the next meeting, just to let you guys know.
He talked about doing it this year.
He, yeah. And I don't think anything's been done yet.
It was a very...
Did you say Walter Miller or Bald Hill?
Uh, I'm sorry, it's Bald Hill, Bald Hill.
Where they were going to try and...
Exactly, exactly. Yes, thank you, thank you. Yes, Bald Hill. So I was going to have him come in to talk about that, but if there's other things that you guys want to raise with him, then be transferred to you. Per our last meeting, I reached out to Comcast about the broadband expansion. They basically said, "There is no part of town that they do not offer broadband to." They have complete power grid, yeah. And so that was a kind of a standard thing they sent out to a bunch of towns that they're involved in to, you know, because they're interested in, obviously, getting a grant for broadband expansion. But there's nothing that they can do here or apply for. But again, I just want to make sure that you guys are aware of that. The equipment that emergency fire police, the grant, the state, the fifty-five thousand dollars, kind of accepted, we're getting forty-nine plus thousand dollars.
Is that the email from Chief Yonkers?
Yes, exactly.
That's what that's referring to?
Yep, that's what that's referring to. So, but, there is a but. So we have to buy the equipment first and then invoice back to them and they'll cut us a check to reimburse us. We're going to cover like five, fifty-five hundred directly. They'll reimburse the forty million dollars. Okay? But we have to buy the equipment first. Problem is, that's fifty-five thousand dollars we have to find in our budget to cut checks from in expense now. I think, simple solution to this is, ARPA funds are our budget. We use ARPA funds to do this and then we get reimbursed back. That way, it's not going to make our back end of our budget cycle very, very tight, because we don't want to go over that bottom line. So I want to raise it with you, see if you guys are on board with that. I think that's the easiest way for us to do this. And like I said, once they buy the equipment, we'll get reimbursed, so it'll come right back to us. You guys agree with that?
Agreed.
All right, great. I will, I will inform Jeff Beanstra in chief about that and make him reflect on it. Um, the last item, again, that came up last time, that was in my notes. I talked to Michael Neal, um, down at, um, Mike O'Neill, who came in about the Simples. Explained to him, um, that based on what Brian said, indicated what we talked about. We didn't think it was ours, but that if he doesn't work, and he thinks it is, then, you know, he can come back and talk to us. He was fine with that. He said, look, as, as long as I know that if it's actually your problem, you can then come back to you and have a discussion about, you know, up here in court. And you would feel with him. So they're all, I'll give a word down there on that. So, uh, those are the items from last time. I think I just wanted to kind of take the circle on. I don't know if you guys have other items before we do the next.
I had a question from a couple of folks. They tried to get on the town meetings, on the town website. And after talking to them, is it possible to get a single file that they're still, because it's kind of a duty.
Oh, uh
Single file or retribution, can you agree with that?
Yeah, we can talk to Sue about that, about, you know, doing something on the website, you mean? Um, yeah. We'll have to probably have to talk to Town Hall Streams about how to do that. The good thing about Town Hall Streams is they automatically archive all of our news. So, um, but we'll, we can probably figure something out on our website to be able to. Is this for the live stream or is this for the archive?
For the live stream.
Okay, for the live stream, yeah. We'll have to probably toward making them about maybe a little
Because there's been a comment, sometimes it's really easy to find. There are times I go forward, I'm like, okay, I can't find it. Just having to go back and recheck.
Sue, actually, someone I should talk about that, I'm going to call. And she added that too, if you put on Snuffboard, if there's a night, like there, and you can work.
Fred, you saw?
Maybe, try it out, see if it works.
We'll have somebody try it anytime. Anything else you guys have that we need to bring up? Minutes from prior reading. Uh, you guys can take a moment to look at that. I don't know if we're
I'm all set to focus on it, I'm ready.
Yeah, thank you, Tom. Now that I had talked to Mike and had some planning board that I'm going to talk about, but I didn't finish the minutes before. Sorry.
Suckin' you some.
Yeah, exactly, just my link to myself over here, Jack.
There's a note in there, you might talk with Wayne and Tom later.
Yeah, um, uh, reached out to Tom, but hadn't heard back, but I'll, I'll try, yeah. Forgot about that, but yeah, we'll, we'll do that. All right. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for Tuesday, June 28th, 2022, as written.
A second.
Second by Jackie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. One other item I just wanted to raise, it came up with planning board last week. So, um, this is an issue having to do with the Vernon family farm. Larry Shaw, the building inspector came in. They had built a, uh, bar restaurant out there. But never went through, uh, any inspections.
Never through.
Any building inspections, electrical, footings, any, anything like that. Um, the planning board is having a consultant into the issue. Um, but they may end up coming back to the board about what may or may not need to be done with respect to that. It's a, it's an issue that, you know, between having a restaurant in a non, in a residential district, as well as having a public restaurant that hasn't gone through proper inspections is a potential liability issue there that the town needs to review and address and find out what what our sorcery is and what we need to do.
More than they have, than they, they've built this recently?
Yeah, just thinking. They've been advertising that there's a restaurant and bar. Uh, and that's why Larry was like, I don't know. Originally, originally, they went to the building inspector to build a platform for coolers and to do a lean-to roof. Um, but what they built was, uh, basically a restaurant and bar with a cooking area and seating and electrical and everything that goes with it. Which, again, is from a, from a safety standpoint, I think that's why Larry was here. He's, he's concerned that if this is operating like this and has not gone through any kind of inspection or decode the footings, you know, did they do proper footings for this? Because they originally were just doing a platform for coolers, but now you may have thirty people now on this platform and if it's not it's not something near, you could, you could have some serious issues. So this is what the consultant to plan is looking at. He's going to get back to planning into potentially us. Just making you aware, maybe coming out of that, that the town may have to do something.
They had new construction?
Is it new?
They had, they did new construction?
No, no.
Not, so they updated what they had for like their chicken house?
Yeah, no, this is not the, the chicken stuff. This is actually like a, a bar and a restaurant facility on the harbor. Um, yeah. So, I, I haven't, I haven't seen it. Uh, it just came up on Thursday, so I'm just letting you guys know. We'll probably hear something from planning board. Just want to make you aware. All right? Anything else, any other matters? All right? Anybody want to make a matter of motion?
I'm making a motion.
Jackie makes a motion for adjourned, second by
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you guys. Appreciate it.
We are leaving next week, great.
Right now, we are planning on meeting on the 26th.
When is the
Yeah, that's what I was talking about.
And then I think somebody else was mentioning we need to second.
Okay, well, yeah, we'll get, we'll try to get some agenda items by the end of the week. So you guys know what's going on.
So you're thinking for 26th?
Yeah, we are.
Can I tell you a nice night?
Thank you, Jackie.
Thanks, guys.
Have a good night, stay cool.
Oh, you too, it's supposed to be 90, oh, wait.
So you're sticking with
Oh, yeah, with yourself?
Oh, yeah. Um, yep, perfect. Actually, I'm prepared, I can.